This meeting of the Committee of the Whole is hereby called to order. There are five items on the agenda for this evening, and no offense to staff and reporters, but with no audience tonight, we don't have to do any of the jockeying that we sometimes do when people are in the audience and who are waiting to see an agenda item. We sometimes move them up to accommodate those folks. We can just go straight through, one through five. So, Mr. Crumstock, for number one, is there an introduction that you're going to do before other staffers come to the mic?
Yes, I'm going to do a quick intro before we move on to Fred.
The floor is yours, sir.
Obviously, in the write-up that we have, this is a presentation that's been going on, and he's smiling, he can actually see my face, but that's a different story.
It looks nice. It's very nice.
But, at the same point, yes, it's the Barry camera that shows. It's been labeled too. So, obviously, when we had a resident construct a new home on Brockway, there was some additional work that needed to be done on the public sanitary sewer, and we're back here to the city council to talk about a recapture fee for that resident, and actually, for part of the city of Rolling Meadows. So, again, we wanted to bring the ordinance to the Committee of the Whole to have this discussion. This home is in the first ward, obviously, with Bing Brockway, but at the same point in time, we just didn't want to throw an ordinance out there with some discussion, and obviously, staff has had a long experience with this property, and with that, I will turn that over to Fred.
Mr. Vogt.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the introduction. In terms of, yes, it's been several years since this sanitary sewer we're talking about tonight has been installed. The property owner that paid for its installation has just recently began to contact staff in regards to what is required to establish a recapture ordinance. It's likely because there's been some inquiries made in the neighborhood about sanitary sewers that they've become interested in again, but we really don't have a limit in terms of when one can request it. It just had never been requested until within the last couple of months, when we started some more serious discussions. Having staff, the city engineer, the city attorney, look at the request, it certainly meets all of the requirements as the city's ordinance and procedures are written for support of a recapture ordinance establishment to allow the person or the individual, in this case, to recoup some of their costs for the installation of the sanitary sewer. We are not yet at the point, from a staff standpoint, of verifying exactly all of these costs, but that's not why we're here tonight to do that, but simply to let the city council know that this is in the works, and if there's any concerns about the procedures or any objections to the process and principle, that we can talk about those now, and then, once we know that the council, if you are supportive of this, we can work with the homeowner to verify and number crunch, as it were, the actual costs for the sanitary sewer construction, because that's all that is allowed to be put into that ordinance, and obviously, we need to back out the appropriate share of costs for his home as well, that was constructed several years ago. One thing that's a little bit odd with this request is that we're dealing with an individual who basically let their letter of credit lapse, and the city had to draw on it. From a proposal standpoint, staff is kind of uncomfortable with having those costs be eligible for the owner to recoup in terms of the recapture, that staff spend a lot of time, a lot of effort chasing that down, getting the final parkway restoration, driveway restoration, pavement restorations done on this street. I did talk with Mr. Chandhook, the requister, as recently as today, and he wanted to pass on that he is not supportive of taking the letter of credit money out. He would like to make a case for including it, and I told him I would share that concern with the council committee tonight, and we can go from there. And, again, that's not something that needs to be decided here, but I wanted you to understand why we backed that out of the proposed numbers that we put in here based on his submitting of paid invoices, canceled checks, and the like, how we came about our calculations based on what our current understanding is of what indeed went into the construction costs for the subject sanitary sewer. So, with that, if there's any questions or anything I can do to explain the process, there are a number of maps here. The city engineer and staff have kind of worked back and forth in terms of direct and indirect benefits, because this is a unique situation, and we're not just dealing with the properties that the new sanitary sewer passed as it was being constructed up to 2991 Brockway, but there's also the benefit for properties to the north of that location due to the fact that the sanitary sewer was installed roughly five to six feet deeper than it otherwise would have had to be installed, so that it's deep enough to, for future extensions, possibly to take place for properties to the north. So, that's an effort that staff and the city engineer will work on to try to determine the fairness quotient and back out, basically, what we have to do in terms of calculating what the cost was in real terms at the depth that it was installed at, as to what the comparable cost would have been without it being installed at a deeper elevation. So, again, those are future things that we would work out amongst staff and amongst the property owner that's requesting this before we would finalize an ordinance for consideration.
Well, I guess I would begin, Mr. Vogt, by saying, I certainly don't have any objection in principle to this process. It certainly seems like if it's something we're allowed to do when we put sewers in at our expense, that's why the code is written the way it is, that it's only fair for a resident to be able to do the same thing. I would not stand too firmly on the idea of the credit drawdown. I get why it's there. It makes a point. If Mr. Chandok, whom I've met before, says that he thinks that that should be in there, I'm certainly willing to listen to that and would be willing to lean that way, simply because, as we say over and over again in our adjudication process, we're really about getting compliance, and sometimes that means we bite our tongue and say that a sign of good faith as a city is to be able to compartmentalize things. So, you know, if there's a big push to push it back in, I really don't have a very strong objection to that, but I think unless there's a really strong push, it does kind of make a statement from the city side that the unpleasantness involved in having to make things happen should have some form of consequence. But if those numbers are pushed to go back in by the owner, I would have no objection to pushing them back in. One issue is one thing, another issue is another thing. I think it's a sign of good faith for us to say, okay, fine. Those are my thoughts. Questions or comments from the rest of the council? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Knowing the history of this property and everything that's gone on, I don't know if I agree with the mayor. I think there probably is something to be said for turning the other cheek, kind of, but I remember when this was actually going on between our legal counsel and all of our staff, there was a tremendous amount of hours put in to make all of that happen with the $10,000 that we ended up taking back, and there was an incredible amount of staff time, and I don't even know how much time Jim and his firm billed us for, but it was a lot of hours that he got involved himself. So, I don't know if I'm willing to turn my cheek completely on it, and this was really, you know, I think the staff is being really polite, but this was really a difficult situation, and the homeowner made things really exceedingly difficult for everybody on our staff, almost to the point where, well, I won't get carried away, but it was really difficult, and I just, I think you should consider that also as part of the equation. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I'm not super privy to the history of this. I do understand what you're saying, that we, you know, all we are, all we really ultimately care about is compliance, but when people make things, when you've got to ask people three and four and five and six times to do things, to get that compliance, at some point, I think you need to kind of say, enough's enough. I don't know enough about this, you know, what would be helpful, maybe, you know, Fred, if you can come back and give a little history, just even in some kind of report you can send out, so that we kind of understand it. I mean, you know, my initial thing, I mean, the first 55, whatever, you know, if that's what we're supposed to do, this is what we're supposed to do, I'm fine with that, I don't care, but the nine grand, you know, we want compliance, but if we ask somebody 17 times for compliance, that's, you know, where do you cross the line of, you know, I'm just not going to do it, okay, you're really going to force the issue, I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to do it. You know, I've heard a lot of things about, you know, Rolling Meadows and inspectors and whatnot, but I tell you, you know, I did a construction project on my house, they asked me to do something, I did, and I had absolutely no issues with them. They just want things done right, and, you know, they're not looking to have a vendetta against somebody, so if they, you know, either Public Works or, you know, the inspectors wanted this done, they wanted it done for a reason, and it just needed to be done, and to sit there and continue to argue with the guy, you know, at what point do you say, okay, enough's enough? So, I'd like to know a little bit more about just the history, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but maybe in just a little letter or report that you can send out, you know, so we can kind of get an idea. I mean, you know, Alderman Cannon knows about it, you know about it, but I don't, I just see it on the face of it, and, you know, so that would be my thing. I mean, I'd probably be, you know, ultimately, the face of it, I'd be against including the $10,000, but the other 55, I could care less about, so, you know, we got to do what's right. Thank you.
Mr. Crumstock.
Just really quickly, we have no problem doing a condensed report, because it could be...
Well, then, before you go any farther, I do. I certainly have no issue whatsoever with what Mr. Cannon and Mr. Judd have said. I understand that line of thinking. I do understand that stepping above those kinds of things sometimes is difficult. I think it's very fair to say that this was a difficult process, but I think it's also fair to say that Mr. Chandok doesn't exactly have warm, fuzzy feelings about it either, and people need to remember that sometimes these things become that kind of thing. So, I believe that because those are the circumstances, to further produce written material that becomes part of the public record that is out there for anybody to web search and so forth and so on, is needlessly bringing up the past. I don't think it's in the spirit of saying what's done is done and moving on. I'm certainly not saying that any alderman who would like further information, if they were not familiar with the situation, couldn't pick up the phone and ask, but I really think that maybe some of us forget what it's like to have your name and your situation and a public document out there for the entire city that contains things like, this person failed to complete several... It's fair. There's nothing unfair about it. It's perfectly objective, but that's a bit of a thumb in the eye, and it has its place and its purpose. To go further down that road and produce some form of staff report, I think, would be lie an approach that says, I'm just trying to make sure the city's... No, I think that's adding insult to injury, and I would prefer that if people would like information, they simply take the time to obtain it, and that the staff not produce any document that rehashes an old story. It's all there in all kinds of different documents already. It doesn't need to be stuck in a fellow's eye, I don't think. Mr. DeEstis.
My only question is, and not knowing the situation, but assume it was a difficult situation, and it sounds as if additional staff time and attorney time and stuff was used.
That is a fair statement, yes.
So, my only, my comment would be, fair is fair. If the city spent an undue amount of labor time, attorney time, then we should be able to recover that part of it, and that would come out of this 8,600, I guess. I'm not quite sure. I'm not sure. I mean, if it's owed, it's owed, but if we spent $5,000 more than is norm, then there's a case for that.
Well, but to be fair, this would not do that.
Okay.
To add those costs into this requirement does not put a penny in the city's pocket as a reimbursement for anything that the city did. It simply says that the dollar amount that all these calculations are based on, that Mr. Chandok can get legitimate reimbursement for, is $9,000 higher or lower, depending on the decision the council makes. And, again, if the council does not want to include that money, I will not stand on a soapbox. I think it's a perfectly reasonable decision to make. It's not the decision I prefer, but I will stand on a soapbox about producing further documentation that rehashes old stuff. Mr. Crumstock.
Just sort of going common, again, not going back into if someone wants something, but, again, just to clarify, the 8,690, if you want to roll it up, it's already been utilized, the letter, and it's a really, really strange event that happened. It doesn't happen a lot, but city staff, because certain projects, specifically tree removal, plantings, streets, a whole bunch of other pieces weren't being completed, the city pulled the letter of credit to do over $8,000 of work to complete the project.
Which is what a letter of credit is for.
Right, and that's what we ended up doing. So, the city, other than staff time and additional legal time, that $8,600 was specifically to finish someone else's project, but that's why the letter was out there, so a project would be completed.
Okay, so, but based on what you just said, that has nothing to do with the sewer? So, if that's the case, then, then, no, that should not be given back, because that has nothing to do with...
No, 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 I don't believe that's an accurate way to phrase it. These are sewer-related expenses. What my position is, is they don't have anything to do with the recapture portion of this, meaning, if somebody's entitled to something, I believe they're entitled to something, and whether we felt we got a hard time...
I've gone away from the hard time, I'm just saying, if these are part of the recapture, then, fine, but if they're not, then they're not owed, then there is no reimbursement back.
Well, anytime somebody would have to do this type of a project, they would have to repair the parkway, and that would be usually considered an expense for the project. So, I think there's a reasonable case, again, to say, I believe we should be able to compartmentalize things, and say, in this area, we didn't appreciate the cooperation we got, but this is another area. That's my stance, and it could certainly be disagreed with by my colleagues, and I have no heartache in terms of whether this money eventually ends up or not. I'm just saying, I would like us to lean to the side of letting bygones be bygones and saying, you know, the two issues should be separate. That's my stance. Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Cannon.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, Mr. DeEstis does bring up a valid point. All of these materials, all of this, the asphalt repairs were not all relative to the sewer project.
Well, I guess that's so, yes, but the way this is being divided out by the staff, the only things that are not considered in boldface as something that could be built into the cost are the ones that there's been no substantiation of how they were connected to the project. I don't think anybody's arguing that that $86,090 wasn't related to the project. The argument is, we had to go after this, and you shouldn't make us go after stuff. Am I wrong? Mr. Vogt.
The, thank you, Mayor. The majority of the letter of credit funds were required to be used for parkway restoration, pavement repairs, neighboring driveway repairs, drainage ditch repairs, as a result of the sanitary sewer construction. There was a small portion for pavement repairs that we considered part of the public right-of-way, public good, public protection that was there. Certainly, if there's a need to break that out in the future for discussion to determine exactly what was sewer-related and what was road-related, we can do that.
That's something that I would be far more comfortable with, that if somebody wants to say there were pieces of this that I know weren't, we could separate those out and get a new figure, and if the council is interested in that, I have no objection, but it is not a correct statement to say that these were not involved in the sanitary sewer, because the majority of them were.
Correct.
Is the council interested in asking the staff to divide out the portion that could be ruled as not really germane to the sanitary sewer, and maybe, how shall I say this, get its message across with that number rather than the number that's here? I would certainly be open to that.
Sure.
I see some nods around the table. Would that be all right?
Yep.
May I ask for a quick show of hands to ask the staff, can you bring us another number that would specifically relate to what was particularly germane to the sanitary sewer and what was not? That is a majority of the council, and I thank you for that consideration. I believe that's a good way to have both sides of this discussion get what they want, where a message could still be sent for those who want to send it, but the compartmentalization that I'm asking for could still be followed in spirit. That's a good suggestion. Thank you. Further comments or questions from the council? Then, seeing none, is that sufficient direction, Mr. Vogt, for how to move forward?
Yeah, we got that part, but it is also, on the last part, the recommendation from staff that we would like to produce a recapture fee once we get the fees done.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, so, in other words...
There'll be a staff report that we give you a number broken down, and then we want to bring this back.
Okay, but, yes, if you would like, that would be fine, meaning, I don't think anybody, even Mr. Cannon or Mr. Judd, expressed any objection to bringing an ordinance forward, but if you would like, all those in favor of the staff bringing an ordinance forward that would make these calculations and go through the time, because we don't object to this in principle, please raise your hand. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yes, thank you, and we will work with the requister and the city engineer to get calculations, and hopefully, agree to buy all before we bring the ordinance back.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, we'll call that the end of number one. Number two is in at my request. We do these things once in a while, where it's just kind of a lay-the-ground-rule kind of thing, and as I was preparing the council action summary, a number of sports metaphors came to mind, and I didn't think those are helpful in writing, they're usually better when you're talking about stuff. I just think it's helpful to go back over, especially when these things tend to cause discussions that sometimes get less than comfortable, about, there are certain times when the city council could be thought of as a bit of a referee between a resident on one side and staff on the other, who has to make the call, referee, judge, something along those lines. There are other times, specifically with staff work, where I think maybe the analogy would be, we're the owner of the team, and with the coach and the five department head, offensive coordinator, defensive coordinator, special teams coordinator, and such, yeah, we're the owner of the team, but it's not a wise owner who steps in and tells the coaches, I'd really like to see you pass more on third and long, and so forth and so on. It's really not the owner's place to be doing that. But the third metaphor that came to mind most recently is that, by the same token, I don't think anybody should take too much offense when a council member legitimately just throws a challenge flag, to bring up another sports metaphor, that simply raising the concern, I'm not really sure this is in keeping with what we, as the council, has decided, is not going after staff or anything else like that, just like a referee shouldn't be upset anytime that challenge flag shows up on the field. Somebody can challenge something, and without having to feel like, you know, there being a skunk at the picnic for doing so. That's a legitimate role of this council. We're supposed to be the oversight body, and so I think if we can all kind of keep in mind the different roles that the council plays, specifically with staff work, we do have to walk a bit of a balance beam, where our job is really to decide, has the staff done something that is reasonable and within the rules? And most of the time, the answer to that is yes, and if it's just not the way I would do it, I don't really have the responsibility to make the staff do things the way I would want them to do. I have the responsibility to make sure the staff does things within what's set, but by the same token, if somebody does have a legitimate concern, that I do think this is outside of what we've decided, nobody should feel any hesitation toward making a claim like that, and nobody should be jumped on for doing it either. That's literally the form of government that this city has chosen. We're not a mayor council form of government where we're all like Chicago aldermen who have a certain area that we get to call the shots on, and so forth and so on. We have professionals for a reason, and so I think we should all remember that that means usually the professionals are going to be telling us things that should be approved, but by the same token, the whole idea of, well, this was said by professionals, therefore we have to pass it, well, then why are we here? We are here to be an oversight body. And so, I just thought with some of the recent conversations that have happened, a little bit of a clarifying statement might be in order. Comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, then that'll call item two to a close, and we can move to item three. Item three is the 2015 vehicle replacement schedule. This is something that the staff has started doing, I don't know, over the last few years, so that, you know, we know, we say, we pass a budget, and budget has vehicles in it, and you can see that in the documentation. Their contribution to help trying to pave the way for these kinds of things is to, early in the year, make it very explicit to all of us. Here are the things that are going to be coming up during the year, and so, if there's any kind of, I'm not really sure I want to do this, I'm not really sure I want to do that, please signal that intention as early as possible. So, with that is my introduction. Mr. Crumstock, do you have one from the management chair?
I do have a really quick one. Obviously, this is a continuation to what we would consider the budget process. Obviously, when we do the capital improvement program, you get to see a broad brush stroke, then when we get into the actual budget, that's where we finalize everything. With the Vehicle Replacement Committee, obviously, we've discussed these vehicles, we show them old and new when we can, but part of the discussion that we had with them is sometimes people want to know, what's the anticipated purchase award date that we're working on, or if we're working on our RFP, so we took it a little bit farther from what past discussions have been after the budget, to show you, here's what's really 2015 at this point in time. These are the schedules that we have up to this point in time, and there is a new column off it that says estimated delivery date and status, so you could see if the Northwest Municipal Conference, if their cooperative actually has, Suburban Cooperative actually has a bid on that with any of those kind of things, or are we looking at a state contract? And, again, the state has their own contracts that go out there. Sometimes, they're a little bit higher than the Northwest Municipal Conference, but we always look for the best, not just drawing pieces together. So, again, it's a little bit of a different view. We are just trying to continue with everybody, so when you see another vehicle come up, at least you know what 2015 is tentatively looking like.
Comments or questions from the council about anything in the grid or anything in the documentation? Seeing none, we're on pace for a record Committee of the Whole meeting. I can't say that that's too bad of a thing. Mr. Vogt.
Yes, Mayor, if I could, just, again, to point out and reiterate that each of these vehicles stands on its own. They will be brought forward to the council for approval on their own, in the event that staff runs into some difficulties...
In the event that staff runs into some difficulties with procurement, on occasion, you know, we do have the option, and we'll go back to the Vehicle Replacement Committee for any changes or changes to the schedule or delays, and let them know about it in advance.
Fair enough. Yes, there is no action taken by this item. It's just simply informational to kind of direct everybody's attention to the vehicle subject as kind of a second bit of advance warning of what's coming up this year.
Correct.
And is appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Vogt.
You're welcome.
All right, then moving on to item four.
Dave gets to go up for this one.
Okay, fair enough. Chief Scanlon? Yeah, what do we call these? Second division vehicles? Yes, I actually had to look that phrase up, but okay, fair enough. Chief, the floor is yours.
Did you find something that was, you know, accurate and didn't change by the statutes?
Yeah, it wasn't real easy, I'll say that. It wasn't.
And therein lies part of our problem, and the reason I asked Mr. McCall to take a look at this and put together a process for us by which we can, you know, try and work through these to resolution with, you know, neighbors and people who have all different types of issues relating to what a second division vehicle is and what it is not. And Mr. McCall came up with what you have in front of you, and I think it's a pretty reasonable offering for some due process for people to be able to at least state their case, instead of having just a patrolman standing at the front door shrugging his shoulders, having to write a ticket or not having to write a ticket and be done with it. So that's pretty much, you know, that's the bolts of it, and we wanted to at least run it by you and show it to you and answer any questions.
My only question is that if this goes through, is Mrs. Danner going to buy lunch or dinner or something for community development not having to take this on, like they have to take on so many things, and the police department saying, "We'll take this on"?
Well, you know, we're all things to all people, and, you know, when they're gone at 5:00, the phone calls come to us, and our patrolmen go out and knock on people's doors, and, you know, we do get stuck with them, and many of them are neighbor disputes-related, so we try and resolve them as best we possibly can. And we just thought in our conversations that if we could come up with a process that would give some due process to people to have not only a decision at the police department level, if they don't like what we decide, then there is somewhere else that they can go, and at least then give them an option, because everybody's got a different issue.
Fair enough. Mr. Deastis, then Mr. Crumstock.
I like the whole thing. The only question I have is letter B. Good repair. Is that too subjective? I mean, especially when you get, like you said, Chief, you've got neighbors that are kind of at each other. One of them's going to say, "It's a good repair," and the other one's going to say, "It's a rust bucket." I mean, is that...
I think that reasonableness is where we like to try and land.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Listen to both sides and try and come up with a resolution. And many times, you know, tow trucks are a good example. People park, you know, the guys get a job, all of a sudden they're out doing a second job, or they're humping toes, they've got a tow truck in their driveway, and people and neighbors don't like it. You know, a couple of days of work with that issue, and we come to a resolution. We find a different place for them to park, you know, we step in and try, versus the guy who just got the job is just trying to, you know, make some extra money, and he didn't even think about it. So it just gives us an opportunity to give the public a process from which, you know...
I'm fine with it. I just wanted to raise that because I didn't want to have that be a sticking point somewhere. If you're good with it, I'm fine with it.
It's always a challenge, there's no question about it.
And I think it's a good point. So, Mr. Crumstock, if you don't mind just for one second, Mr. McCall, I would imagine somewhere in car insurance law or something along those lines, there might be standards about the phrase "good repair." Could there be? Or...
[inaudible]
So maybe if we felt the need to, you know, get something to not have to have our own judgments be called into question, but be able to say to somebody, "Hey, you know, the insurance industry says good repair is these things," maybe that could be something you could dig up to have as a bit of a shield in terms of just, "Well, the cops said this." No, there are standards that say that. It might be something that could be looked into. Mr. Crumstock?
What I also want to reiterate, obviously, there's been a lot of give-back and discussion on this staff-wise, but the other part is if we still have on the books for zoning. So this is really for a person who has that hardship, that person who, give the best example without giving why one of these came up, but let's say hypothetically, someone's working for a job, and I know Dave mentioned a towing, but let's go if it's a plumber or someone who does HVAC. Part of their responsibility is that for a weekend, they have to bring that vehicle home, because if they get that emergency call, they have to respond within an hour. So then they're going to be bringing that vehicle home for a limited time, but then we would have those discussions. Okay, you can file for that year, we understand it, but can he house it somewhere else? And that's what we do typically right now with the zoning laws, that we do try to move it. So it also gives people, obviously, a comment, "Hey, what about a truck coming?" That's not what this is really set up for. It is specifically, obviously, for the chief to deal with these neighbor disputes, some of these economic issues, and also deal with it. And then obviously, if they don't like their decision, there is one more recourse back to the manager before it would take that next point in time. But we are trying to accommodate both sides, but also understand the health, welfare, and the character of the area with the economics. And we are seeing just a few of these. It's not rampant throughout the area, because most people, when you explain to them, you really need to find that off-site area, or you need that other area to screened in the back of your property, they're going to do that.
Mr. Cannon?
Chief, could you tell me, one of the things I noticed when I was reading through this, this doesn't really delineate what size vehicles we're talking about. So are we talking about mostly service vans and pickups? I'm not trying to be pushy on this, I just, you know, I'll give you an example. For the last three weeks on Euclid, in the city of Palatine, but right next to our town, has been a red rig parked there, right next to our property. It's not in the city of Rolling Meadows, though, but it's about two feet away from us, and it's been there for three weeks. It's the full cab. So could someone park something like that in our city? And is that part of this deal?
I think they'd have a hard time getting that passed us for a permit sake. I think, you know, it goes back to what's reasonable. That's just not, in my mind, that's not reasonable in the neighborhood, and we've had those. I've had a couple of those pop up over the years, and they're very difficult to resolve. But I would say that's an easy, that's a no-brainer. It's a no.
And then just in general, like, I know a couple of months ago, there was one weekend, I noticed there was four full semi-trailers parked next to the liquor store on Algonquin over near Woodfield Gardens. There was four of them parked right next to each other, so obviously they were all together. Is that legal, or is that, is this trying to address this also?
We do get some truckers that do, are delivering somewhere in the area, they get permission from the property owner to park overnight for a night or two, and then after we usually get a complaint, then we do reach out and, you know, have to... This is an ongoing, you know, service that we provide on a regular basis, and all of the things that you're talking about are complaints we normally deal with.
But so this is helping you get through this, then?
Well, this is really designed for our, the residential areas where, as the manager said, where we've got people that need some flexibility, and where we need some flexibility to be able to resolve the problem. A lot of times, these are not resolved overnight. It usually takes us a couple of days to try and work through them, find alternative parking, have them parked behind the, you know, talk to both parties, and try and come up with some kind of a resolution to them. It's, you know, the big trucks, the dump trucks, you know, those kinds of things where they get up at 5:00 in the morning and let them run and warm up, because they're diesels, and they wake up in an old neighborhood, those are easy. The ones that we're just talking about where somebody's got a new job, and he's on call, and he's got to work through those things, we'd like to have some flexibility to be able to give him some time to work through those.
Thank you. Mrs. Majakis?
Thank you. I'm in support of this, because I've actually had a resident that has had this whole situation pertains to, and this will help them out, and they've been contacting me quite often, which I'm glad about it, and they've been looking for some help. And so I'm definitely in support of this, so thank you.
Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does this impact, like, vehicle stickers? I mean, if somebody's going to be housing it, you know, for some portion, you know, I've got to be, I've got to have it because I'm on call every weekend. Okay, I get that, but I think our codes say something about housing vehicles. So if you're not the owner of the vehicle, would we either be able to say, "We're going to make you buy a vehicle sticker if you're going to park it here"?
In a lot of those cases, they've already bought us a sticker or paid their wheel tax somewhere else, and they've already got them on the vehicles, and we don't do both.
But what I'm saying, should that be part of this? I mean, just because they bought a wheel sticker somewhere else, if you're going to park the vehicle in our quotable community, you know...
I think Mr. McCall can answer that.
Just a thought, I mean, I'd say...
Mr. McCall?
No, because the tax is imposed upon wherever the vehicle's registered. So if the vehicle's registered in Elk Grove, and Elk Grove's got a vehicle sticker, vehicle tax, then they would pay it in Elk Grove. They don't pay it in Rolling Meadows, because the cars parked overnight in Rolling Meadows.
What are they considered by "registered"?
Wherever it's registered with the Secretary of State.
Okay, I would disagree with that, just in the sense that I was at a point in time where I had my vehicle registered not in the city of Rolling Meadows, and was instructed I had to have a city of Rolling Meadows sticker because it was housed here.
Had you paid a vehicle tax somewhere else, though?
No, but it wasn't registered here.
Pardon me?
It wasn't registered here.
No, I understand that, but we generally don't, and we don't get, we don't have any luck over in the courts where somebody's paid their vehicle tax somewhere else and then would have to pay it again. In our community, we can't get that past the courts. As long as they've paid their wheel tax somewhere, doubling it is not going to fly. We've had some real problems with that.
And not to muddy the waters, but as people sometimes wave in my face, and I'm sure maybe some of my colleagues around here, there are towns that don't have vehicle stickers. Does that muddy the waters, where if it's registered in a place where there was no wheel tax paid, then, I mean...
Yeah, it does muddy the water, and I do think that in that case, if it's going to be here, and it's going to be housed here, and they haven't paid a wheel tax somewhere else, then we may issue the ticket and force them to do something. So we have done that.
Okay. Now, Mr. Cannon?
Just to go along with this, though, you know, if you have a company car, you're still required to have a vehicle sticker, even though it's owned and leased through another city, near another state. 99 out of 100 times, it's another city. So I mean, but we still force people to get stickers for that.
If they haven't paid a wheel tax somewhere else, yes.
But they have paid a wheel tax someplace else, but we still ask them to get a sticker here. I was told that when I first moved into town, because we had company cars for 25 years.
All I'm saying is, when challenged, when we write the tickets...
Then that's not, okay.
We don't win those.
All right. Thank you.
Well, and is maybe some of this related to the idea of, I'm presuming with company car, it's something that's around 365, whereas I think we're talking about situations where somebody just needs to park it there on the weekends and isn't using it on a daily basis to bring home. Does that make any distinction, or no? I don't know.
I just think they're two different issues, and, you know...
Okay. Then they're two different issues.
We do deal with them from that perspective, and that is our basic rule of thumb. If there's a valid wheel tax, you know, sticker on the window, generally speaking, we don't issue another wheel tax sticker or ticket, mostly because we don't win them. They challenge, and we lose them.
Mr. Deastis?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? And seeing none, could I ask for a show of hands? How many people would be in favor of staff bringing forward basically this ordinance? Yes?
Yes.
How many people would be in favor? That is a unanimous council, therefore it may be brought forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief, for the time. Moving on then to number five. That brings Mr. Vogt back to the podium, I can see. Mr. Crumstock, are you going to...
Only intro that I'm going to say is, this is our annual discussion about CDBG. Obviously, the next city council meeting, we'd be having our CDBG call for projects. Well, here's our project that we would like to discuss with you on this one. Obviously, we've done park district projects, we've done, obviously, some city ones, too, but this is a little more discussion, and that's why we brought it here before anybody with some of the ramifications that we talked about, phase one, phase two, phase three at the building, but this is part of the presentation.
Mr. Vogt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the Old Public Works Building Improvements, as we're calling it at this point, was identified in the previous year's five-year plan as the next project to be considered. The county doesn't necessarily hold us to those priorities, but it is worth a lot of explanation if we submit a project that isn't on the five-year priority from years past, and that's one of the reasons why we do the updates, and they require the updates to be done every year so that they can see what our planning process actually looks like. The Old Public Works Building, as most of you know, is housed for Public Works, City Department Storage, the Park District use, as well as Northwest Special Recreation Association. Back in 2000, in large part because of the relationship that the Park District has with NWSRA, we were able to do a considerably large project there with the parking lot repairs, the bus storage, some building repairs, as well as some building renovations and expansions there for the Park District and NWSRA storage. So staff believes that this project is a good project to submit for consideration of community development block grant funds. We don't often get dollar-for-dollar in terms of what we submit and what we request based on how the county allocates their funds throughout the area and to those projects eligible, but nevertheless, if we can get some assistance, we believe that it's worthwhile to consider. We do have roofing needs, as we've discussed earlier. The budget this year provides for $125,000 for that. It is a multi-year project that could take us probably at least four years at that level of funding to go through the various sections of roofing of the different sections of that building. There are a great deal of masonry repairs needed there, as well as heating system repairs in there, just to name the top three. So in talking with city staff, Park District staff, we are confident that, you know, we can put a project submittal application together for this building. The timing of the community development block grant funds in the county is that the projects typically are due for submittal the end of February or early March. Their staff reviews them. By the time the county board goes through their approval or their review and approval process, it's usually the summer, late summer, by the time we get the word as to whether we've been successful and to get an indication of how much funding they may offer us to proceed. Many of the projects we've done in recent years involve the Park District, so there's a good working relationship between our staff and the Park District staff to work with the county. So that's really where we are at this point, as the city manager indicated, our call for projects that are required in case there are any other community groups that want to request a consideration of a project that could meet the eligibility standards is now, so that the city council can make their final decision by the end of February to proceed or not. And just as a backup, if for some reason, this isn't desired to be a project submittal this year, our next project identification is Arbor Drive roadway improvements. Because of the census block tract data in that area, that area is eligible for improvements such as roadways, curbs, sidewalks, if desired, drainage systems. So if we proceed with the Public Works Building, we certainly will have the option in future years to either submit for additional funding as the renovation needs continue, or to move to Arbor Drive or any of the other projects that we've identified here or may identify, or get requests from the community such as the Park District in the past. So with that, we're ready to proceed if the council is supportive of moving forward, if the council has some other ideas on that. Would love to hear those so we can react in short order, because the deadlines will be upon us soon.
Comments or questions from the council? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For most of the people who've been sitting around here for a few years, you know, for the last three years, I've been harping on building a new building down there, so I would not be in support of this. I think we really need to make a more substantial investment in that building, like a new one. So I will not be supporting this. I would suggest we go to the Arbor Drive thing immediately. Thank you.
Objections are noted. Mr. Bajer?
Thank you. I agree with Oliver and Cannon, and I've been harping on the Old Public Works Building along with him for the past several years. Am I the loudest one on this thing?
Yes.
Wow. So, and furthermore, let's skip to the next one, and I would also suggest that we don't have Old Public Works... have Old Public Works on the next council. But this will be a great opportunity for us to maybe prod that issue back in front of us so we can make some, what's going to be a hard decision about tearing that down and building a new one, or doing something with it. We earmarked the $125,000, and I remember this in our capital improvement committee, just because I think the members of that committee, we weren't there to make that decision, that's a council decision, and we just didn't want to even think about it, but it was something that we needed to have something reflected in the budget. So, just having personally been there, I would say that's, that's an amount of money for, you know, a nominal amount of repairs, certainly not as much as that building needs. We've all talked about how much that building needs in repairs, and I would hate to feel bad about even getting grant money to throw at that thing when hopefully we'll make a decision to rebuild. But again, that's a decision we can make, and I know we have a timeline to apply for this, but I would just dodge that bullet by skipping down to the next one that we could apply for. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Veenbus?
If that's the case, it sounds like my microphone's a little bit softer than yours, but can you turn mine up? If we decided not to spend the money, the $125,000, what does that do to the building? And if we're realistically saying that a building may not be put up for another one, two, three, four, or five years, or whatever the number is, I mean, what is this thing going to fall down if we don't spend $125,000? Or, I mean, sometimes you have to unfortunately sink money into investments to keep them going, despite the fact you'd like to put up a $2 million building. Can you shed any light on that, Fred?
Certainly, as we continue to defer maintenance, particularly with roof, that the risk of water damage into the building increases, which increases the risk of, you know, the materials that are stored there in certain areas. Some areas are equipment storage, which has less of a risk, but that is our primary concern, is the water damage from the roofing repairs that are needed if we continue to put those off. The, some of the heating systems in that building, because it's not one heating system, but several different units are either at or very imminent for failure, and it's quite likely that deferral for a year, two, or three is going to cause us to have to make some of those repairs anyway to just keep that building functional from a heating standpoint. The masonry, as Alderman Cannon knows from a specific visit, is at risk of pieces falling on your head if you stand too close to the building at just about any time, again, because of the water damage, in part because of the roof, and just in part because of the age and the fact that we haven't retreated that building, haven't, you know, tuck pointed that building for a number of years, just again, because of the condition that it's in, it needs more than just a routine tuck pointing. So, yes, I think from what you're saying, you're correct, that there may be some costs that we're going to inherently have to put into that building just to keep it a couple of years, if we're going to keep it a couple of years.
So, is it true that this is almost like a minimum amount of money you need to keep this thing afloat till a bigger decision gets made to replace this building? Is that, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I guess I am.
I guess what you could actually say is that when we were discussing in the budget, we were doing phasing on this to, Band-Aids continue the life of the building at this point in time, and the priority really was the roofing. And again, each phase has its own feel to the building to keep it operational and sound. Sounds kind of funny to say "sound" building when we know that there are some brick issues, but, and also deal with the users of that building. Obviously, Rolling Meadows has numerous groups who use it, and one of those users is actually the historical museum that has one small section of that, too. So, again, it's multiple phases to keep the building operational until a decision is really done, because at this point in time, there are things to be done. And we have a big study that was done.
2010?
2010, and then we did some tweaking of it in 2014, that we looked at some of the other things that talk about some of the additional work that needs to be done in that building.
So, if I understand you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Barry or Fred, this would be the minimum amount of money you'd need to keep this thing alive until we make a decision and have the money to be able to replace it?
Each phase would be the minimum that we could see in the budget to maintain the building until a final determination, and it gives it longer life.
Mr. DeJesus, and then Mr. Judd.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, does my memory serve me correctly? I thought we said we wanted to put the minimum amount of money into this building that we can to keep it afloat for another five years. Did we not have that conversation, or am I dreaming? I thought...
No, I, that conversation did take place. I believe you're correct. The only thing my memory isn't serving on is, was the number five.
Okay.
It may have been.
Okay.
But yes, we, the last point we left this off was, we certainly need to keep up our responsibility as a property owner and keep it going.
Okay.
Does that answer what you were asking?
Yeah. I thought the council, a majority of the council said that we need to put some money, we need to continue to put some money into this building to make it last for another three, four, or five years, whatever that number was, and by that point in time, we will have a decision on exactly what we're going to do with it, so.
That is my recollection as well.
So, if that's the last recollection, then I'm going to stick with that and say, I'm fine with this.
Mr. Judd, you were next in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really not much different than the fire station, in my opinion, that I'm not interested in, haven't been interested in putting money into building this essentially, and this isn't falling down, but it's sure not in very good shape. And I've been proponent, obviously moving the fire station there, but if not, you know, looking into the, you know, aspect of rebuilding it. If we're going to do this, you know, I think what needs to be done is a decision needs to be made. And if we say, okay, you know, this is the bottom, I mean, it's just frustrating when I see roads put in and ultimately torn back up because they have to do something else. Cities Chicago loves to do that, you know, there's one right by where I work, that they resurfaced it, three months later tore it up to put some kind of sewer thing in, and then had to resurface it again. So, you know, if we're even thinking about rebuilding this potentially next year, then I would say, let's not waste the money. If we're going to potentially say, okay, we're going to rebuild this in 2018, then I agree with Alderman DeJesus, you've got to do something to protect what's in there without letting it go away. And if you, you know, if you have these units, the heating units, they're going to end up seizing up and costing you a lot of money, but ultimately, you're going to end up with much more damage by not doing, AKA, you know, your house isn't heated and your pipes freeze. Now, you're an idiot not fixing your furnace, because now you've got additional costs for the pipes, because they're frozen, cost you a lot more money. But I just, you know, I'd like to make a decision somewhere along the line, sooner rather than later, of what we're going to do with the thing. If we're going to tear it down and rebuild it, let's not put money into it, let's just tear it down and rebuild it. If we're going to redo just a section of it to get it done, to say, we're going to extend this thing six, 10 years, that's not something I would support, but then let's just do that, and let's not keep putting Band-Aids on it, because eventually, it's going to end up being a lot worse. So, I just think that, you know, this would be something that would prod us to move forward, make a decision as a council, and decide what we want to do with the thing. If it's to extend it for 10 years, let's put the money into extend it for 10 years, or 20, or whatever it is. If it's to tear it down, move forward, let's tear it down and move forward. But we've talked about this numerous times, and here we are, kind of again, talking about it a little bit as well. So, I just think we need to make a decision, I mean, Alderman Baner's mentioned numbers times, a plan. Just kind of fixing it as it goes along doesn't seem like a real good plan to me. That's just my opinion, so, I mean, it's, I'd be more interested in figuring out what we're going to do and make a decision before I'd really support or say push it off, but I'd be inclined to push it off, you know, go to the Arbor Drive or whatever the next one is. Thank you.
Mrs. Majakis?
Thank you, Mayor. I know, as long as I've been on the council, this has been up for discussion, this building, and I don't know how many years prior to my being on the council, it's been a discussion, I think quite a few. But anyway, I was under the understanding, as Alderman DeJesus was, that a decision was made. The exact years, I don't know either, but I will support this because, like I said, I thought we made the decision to put the minimal money that we could into it for the time being. If a decision hasn't been made on this building as to whether to tear it down and build a brand-new one in the last two years since I've been here, I don't think we're going to be able to come to that decision and do a new building next year. And I know when we talk about the new building, we've talked about the portion of this land is in a floodplain, what's going to be involved with that, the extra costs to all of that. So, there's a lot more involved than just saying, let's tear it down and build a new building. You can't just, it's not that simple. So, I thought we made the decision already, and I'm sticking to that, so I will be in support of this. Thank you.
Mr. Prina?
As I've listened to this, I agree with Alderman DeJesus, since I've been on, was either three, four, or five years, but I understand with Alderman Baner, Baner and Cannon are saying it would be great to have a new building. However, even if we decided on that, it would still be two, three, four years down the road before we could even get it together. So, I would support, as much as I would like to see a new building, I would support putting the money into it to see if we have that extra three, four, or five years, and keep it going until we do make a decision.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we had that last discussion, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, there was talk of a five-year program, but I don't think there was any mutual agreement that that's where we're going forward on.
That may be why a dollar, excuse me, a year number does not jog in my memory bank.
Because I think, yeah, I could be wrong, I'm not, but you know, when we had that discussion, we talked about a year program, and we also talked about, we asked some very poignant questions of what we could do on that property, and if there was any other options available, we actually had some discussion, pretty in-depth discussion about floodplain there, as to what kind of a footprint we could use, and we've never really got feedback as to what would be a possibility there, whether we could save part of the building and use some of it, which probably not much, but maybe some, and then rebuild it in some fashion at that site or some other site. But I just think, you know, I think that somewhere in the next few weeks, I don't understand why we have to keep on pushing this thing off. I think as a group, we just need to decide one way or another. Whether people agree with me or not, that's fine, but I think they keep on having these discussions, week after week, month after month, now we have two newer members of the council, now they're starting off from square one, kind of, well, it's one and two, excuse me, I don't mean to be rude, but, but I just, you know, they're trying to learn what's going on here. I mean, the building is falling apart, and if we, and you know what, we can spend this $125,000, and that's fine, you know, if that's what you guys want to do, that's great, but the $125,000 is not going to be the temporary fix for this year. There's other issues there. I mean, when Fred gave us our presentation last year, if you remember, there's major issues with plumbing there, it doesn't meet all, any kind of codes from ADA and all that stuff, there's issues with heating, and the roof's just one aspect of it. There's, almost every structural aspect of that building has major issues. So, if you think $125,000 is going to solve the problem, I think you're sadly mistaken. Again, my opinion only. And I think, I would just like to propose, if, I don't know if we can do that now, but make some decision, either if we have to have a special session on a Saturday or something, and just decide on these things. Whatever way we decide to go, four wins it. So, let's just go forward with whatever the four people want and move forward this thing, instead of admitting, torturing these guys, month after month, year after year, going through the same stuff. So, let one side win, whatever side it is, I'm fine with it, but to keep on talking about this is, just seems ludicrous. So, thanks for listening.
I might offer the thought that, on its face, it might appear to be a two-sided decision of if you want to go with what the council previously decided, this is a way to pay for it, and if you want a new building, you wouldn't do this. But I do think there is another minor issue here, and that's, somebody can be in favor of keeping the building going like we decided, and simply saying, I don't think asking for a grant to do that is really the spirit of a community development block grant. You know, something like we've used it in the past for ADA improvements, you know, that's a thing that we famously call unfunded mandates. So, to get some kind of funding for a decision that was made by a larger group, that makes sense to me. When people use community development block grant funds to do something like a tot lot, to do something like the plaza down in East Park, to do something new that didn't exist, that's a no-brainer right there, that simply falls in. I think if we're going to make the decision, which I believe was also a good one, made already, that we're going to make sure this building stays alive for a multi-year period of time, however long it is, the question is still open as to, should we be asking other people to pay for that, or should we suck it up ourselves? I believe that, you know, paying for things with other people's money is always nice, but it may not always be the spirit in which the money's supposed to be offered. Somebody might say, well, something like Arbor Drive is really kind of like for repairs and so forth and so on, but that's got a whole nother, that's got a whole nother criteria for it. As Mr. Vogt mentioned, that's simply because census data there says that it qualifies. That's not true in the area of Old Public Works. And so, I do think it's a fair point to say, not any problem with the decision previously made by the council for now. Sometimes maybe free money should be said, thanks, but no thanks, because I really don't think that's what you want us to do with the cash. Sorry. Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Veenbus?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So, there's probably no denying that we need to spend some money on this building to keep a roof over our heads while we decide to put in a new building.
I believe there's no denying that, correct?
Okay, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. But what you're saying is, the work that we're suggesting to have done here, capital required to do it, really is not...
I guess, to put it plainly, we can get it. Does that necessarily mean we should?
Okay.
I think that's an open question, that folks need to decide for themselves. Mr. DeJesus?
My answer to that is yes.
Fair enough.
If, seriously, if we've made a decision to make this building last three, four, or five years, and this is a legitimate request to use community development block grant, then I don't see any reason why we shouldn't take advantage of that and add this $300,000 or whatever it is to the money we've already put in, and get the job done. So, to answer your question, yes, I think it's a good, it's an appropriate use of this money for this purpose, and it relieves our residents, it helps them a little bit, and it goes to what the majority of the council decided of, extend this building for multi-years, whatever that number was, until we can tear it down and build something new. So, yes, my answer is yes, I'm good with it.
Fair enough. Mr. Crumstock?
Not to muddy the waters anymore, but...
This will be the third item that we've thrown mud in the water on, I believe. Mr. Crumstock?
It's in a floodplain, so it keeps on coming there. But again, we can request the money, and that's what we're asking with the CDBG and anything else like that. We do not know how much the county potentially could give us, the max is that $300,000, and then obviously, if we're awarded something and then the council decides, oh, we just want to turn it down, you're always under that option to turn it down at that point. I know that just muddied everything, the discussion that we've been...
Well, I believe in one sense it does, because we have talked before about the consequences of turning money down. I don't think that any suggestion that, oh, well, we do have that as a failsafe, is anything I'm willing to consider for more than about five seconds, because we've gone down that particular road before, and I don't consider that a failsafe. But, contribution is noted. Further discussion from the council? Then it's go time. The question is, should at the very next council meeting, something be brought forward to put the Old Public Works Building in? to put the Old Public Works Building in as the request for 2015, correct?
The submittal is 2015, the project is considered 2015, but the monies don't become available until 2016.
That's why I'm not really sure what to call it. So, for the next CDBG year, how about we'll just leave it that way? Who would say they are in favor of staff bringing forward something that would make this project the next in line for the CDBG money for the year? That is four hands. To give the satisfaction of raising the hand, those who are opposed? That's two. So, therefore, as Mr. Cannon succinctly put it, four wins. So, that item may be brought forward. Is that sufficient direction?
Thank you, and we will start the process and work with the Park District in meeting the deadline that the county has for this, which I believe will be late February.
Fair enough. I believe the, if nothing else, bringing forward the idea is appreciated, that if we keep saying we're looking for different ways to do things, this is that, at the very least.
We will need a resolution of support for that, as well as an update of the five-year plan that we typically do at the same time in February.
Fair enough. All right, then, unless there's any further business, that concludes the committee of the whole. Mr. Cannon.
Mayor, in light of our discussion tonight, is there any way that we go back in the minutes and clarify what statements were actually made last year relative to the longevity of this building?
I have no objection to that at all.
Could we have a report maybe next meeting? Is that possible?
I wonder if next meeting might be a little soon, but because it kind of is relevant to the decision, I guess I would ask, could staff make their best effort to at least maybe just dig up the dates of the minutes that we could each go back into and look ourselves, rather than putting something together? I know that the deputy city clerk has this wonderful magic database that she can do this search through all the minutes that I don't have any access to. Perhaps, maybe if you can just throw us the dates, maybe that would suffice. Would that be all right?
Could she give us a speech about it also?
No.
And a city clerk's report at the next meeting, and, yeah, exactly. How about that, Mr. Cannon? Would that be acceptable, that if she can just give us the dates of meeting minutes, we can each go back?
Right.
I think that's a fair point. Mr. DeJesus.
No.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to adjourn.
All right, then, this meeting of the committee of the whole is adjourned.